While you're sitting there waiting.
Thank you, Carl.
Yep. The last paragraph pretty much.
Summies it up?
I'll sum it up.
Yeah, you can have that.
Yes. Have the coach do it.
I might have missed that one. Talking about Patty.
This is my mother. I never asked her to talk for that.
No, I mean, I wouldn't.
I've got the computers that were asked for for the high school. Is that in the project?
They're in it, yes.
You told them to turn the camera on. I don't remember deciding.
Yeah. Up to you.
Is that what we wanted to do all four years? What was the price for that?
We took the math out of the elementary. Yeah, and we left them in it.
How much?
Twenty-six thousand.
Okay. We figured we have to do at least, if we have any doubt, we try at least to do it during the high school. Okay. Because they're the ones who have to lie. You're required to bring your fear. I couldn't remember, and I couldn't remember where.
That makes sense to me.
Yes.
I can't identify specific because I could be. I restated twice.
Yep. All right. Five thirty-five. Oh, it's on. Thank you. Call the meeting to order at five thirty-five. And I'd like to have everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance. And a moment of silence, please. Flagging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any adjustments to the agenda that...
I'd like to add volunteer coach for high school baseball. And I have a couple of additional reports that I'd like to give. They're just short, brief things that have happened in the last week or so.
Well, let's do it right now.
All right. As you know, we applied for a bus, additional bus for handicapped, and they have a backup situation. And we've been approved.
Yes.
And the approval's coming around to you right now. That's a good thing. A not-so-probably-promising thing is this little message I got this week as well. Camey Benet's trust voted, this was, it says, last night, but would have been through sixteen, to set the high rate, the highest rate for the July sixteen, two thousand sixteen insurance at a nine percent increase. So that's the high rate. That's as high as it's go. Now, budget-wise, we're five. So based upon our experience rating, I'm guessing that we'll probably be pretty close to five, but I could have, or could have underestimated depending on how they're calculating the experience rate. So just to keep that in mind as we do budget, never over until it's over, and we won't know for a little while. And the last little piece I got, on the seventeenth of July, send those around. The Ed Committee has been, has had a committee together, Lexley Education Committee, to review the bills that were up for graduation standards. And on Wednesday last week, they announced we supported the graduation standards bill that would require the class of two thousand twenty-one to be proficient in core, four core areas, math, English, science, and social studies, and require proficiency in all eight areas by two thousand twenty-five. And that's a little different than what we've been talking about, what's been presented previously, but that's where the legislation is headed, and there's an expectation that that will pass the legislature. So for those who are class of two thousand twenty-one, be prepared, and if you're two five, two thousand twenty-five, be very prepared. And last but not least, why don't we do the...
Please, Jeff.
I'd like to recommend volunteer coach for high school baseball, Corey Fleming.
I move that we accept the nomination of Corey Fleming as a volunteer high school baseball coach. Second. Case to move and seconded, to accept Corey Fleming as the, as a volunteer coach for the high school baseball team. Any discussions? Does anybody know who he is?
Who interviewed this... Oh, oh.
I thought some called Cole.
Some told me Cole.
Corey Fleming, he used to be the athletic director at WA. He now works at the Calis Day improvement school. Well, he did, last I knew, he did. He might be in the elementary school now, actually. Last I knew, he worked at the day improvement school. He's a good guy.
I would assume that this is Kenny's recommended.
Yes.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Love, free hand.
All opposed? Okay. Is that ready for you, Bill?
Yep.
Ready for you?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Who wrote the minutes of March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen? Anybody have any amendments to those?
On the second page.
Hang on a minute. Second page.
Where the board would like to review GBEACF, and it says CBJ, that's...
CBI, that's an I.
Next name.
Somebody can't read my writing. I'll fix that. Should be CBI.
Anything else? I move to accept the minutes as amended for March fifteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moving seconded to accept the minutes from March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, as amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, one vote there. I want fifteen there.
One abstention. Okay, public participation. Anybody have anything to comment about on the agenda? Or not on the agenda?
I do. Critical comments have been made public about me. Regardless, I have and will always place the students in these schools first, ahead of administration, ahead of teachers, ahead of coaches, and ahead of other parents. I would not be on the school board if it didn't, if I didn't place our kids first. We need to do better for our kids, and I feel that we can, especially when it comes to our students' physical and emotional well-being and when it's in jeopardy. I refuse to stand idly by while events contrary to policy occur. I feel that everyone in authority should treat all fairly and assume that all students and parents do not lie. I can describe specific situations. There was a fistfight between two students on a team before basketball practice, and which students I was injured. Both students had to sit out two games, and the rest of the team was told to keep their mouths shut about the incident. Everyone knows that both students should, by the student handbook, face suspension. What does this tell to the rest of our students in our school? It makes a statement that some students have privileges and others do not. Seventh grade boys were made to miss an entire week of gym class because no one would speak up about another boy in the class having his T-shirt thrown in the toilet. Evidently, physical education class and promoting physical fitness is not important enough, but punishing a whole class for the actions of one is acceptable. The school committee has been told that we have a tremendous drug problem in our high school. Have speakers, guests knowledgeable about drug addiction been brought in? Has it been arranged through our nurse to communicate to teachers, students, and parents on this matter? Have teachers been appropriately guided through in-service training to deal with this tremendous drug problem? Have parents been invited to special events to help them cope with their children who are tempted or involved with drugs? Have there been any surprise searches done to discover drugs brought into the school? If any of this has been done, the committee has not been informed, nor has the committee been informed about this particular problem, or if any other method has been pursued to combat drugs in our school. I have heard this statement during a Baileyville School Committee meeting: Not all parents tell the truth. This kind of remark does not promote trust, confidence, or respect in the parents in our community. It does go a long ways toward alienating people who should not have to hesitate before bringing their concerns and frustrations to our attention. I have both friends and students that are relatives of mine in this school system, and I have often referred people who come to me with a problem outside the school to go and discuss it with the administration. I wonder why they are so reluctant to do so. Perhaps someone thinks that I should limit my contact with family or people in the community to suit them. I was accused of having a conflict of interest by having lunch out with the grandmother of one of the coaches. In fact, I've had lunch with two of the coaches' grandmothers on several occasions. Anyone criticizing me for this is evidently not knowledgeable about what conflict of interest is. Conflicts of interest involve immediate family or spouses, having a personal gain, and allowing the activities coordinator last year to hire his son was a conflict. Although outwardly, it seems that employing the husband of a close friend for fourteen years would be a conflict, it is not. As a board member, your spouse working in the superintendent's office, subbing in the school's offices, or teaching would be a conflict. We are a small community, and no one can cry conflict of interest every time a board member has a friendship or relationship. Anything that is discussed during a public board meeting is open for public knowledge, so we are within our rights to discuss with the public items that are taken up during open meetings. After all, we were voted here by the public to represent them. However, executive session items are not open to the public, and discussions are not to be shared with the public. One of our committee members made a dramatic exit from a highly sensitive executive session at one point, and the rest of our committee could hear this individual's voice in the hall outside. Then a re-entry was made. This and other factors prompted the other members to request to Mr. Braun that the Code of Ethics be given directly to this committee member. No one tried to hold this person up to public ridicule or criticism. And recently, a person from the public sphere was allowed to be present at a meeting that should not have been open to the public. Mr. Braun was incorrect to allow this, and he should have been more aware of his responsibility to the Baileyville School Committee. I highly doubt that the leadership team was publicly embarrassed because we did not pass the JICC policy fast enough. I did attend all of those meetings, even the ones that I felt were catering to one member of the public who could have asked questions had they attended the first set of meetings that were held in developing the policy. No one should accuse me and any other board member of wasting time when the whole process was held up weeks due to one person who was not myself. I nodded my head in agreement to some of the changes in the policy, but as I reread the policy, I was not comfortable with some of the wording. As a board member, I am entitled to do consideration and to form an opinion, which may not be the opinion that others assume that I have made. I have reason to believe that this policy will be followed intermittently. There are previous policies and procedures that have blatantly been ignored. The policy of the collection of school team uniforms being required in order to pay coaches was previously ignored. Some seem not to understand that ignoring policies that have been passed for good reasons leaves the board with little ground to stand on when these situations are questioned or challenged by the public. The board is unable, in those instances, to explain when and why some groups or individuals are excluded from the application of these policies. Extreme reactions to questions regarding these policies and concerns I have brought to the board's attention. A board which legitimately determines policies and procedures for the schools shows an attitude, in my opinion, that is incooperative and resentful. The school committee was asked last fall to provide information when anyone thought of a way in which the school would approve, or anyone could perform their job better. Apparently, that request was insincere. All in all, this being said, I've done nothing wrong. I have pointed out only a few of the policies that have been ignored and inequitably applied. As Mr. Braun said, everyone is entitled to their opinion. However, no one should be commended for addressing me or any other committee member the way that these recent letters have. All I ask is that everyone does their job the best that they can according to their job description with an unbiased attitude, fairly, honestly, and respectfully for our students, our parents, and our teachers, and I in return render due courtesy.
All right.
Since that was read in the public meeting, can I ask that it be transcribed and made available for people to review?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Number six, Woodland Education Association grievance.
Okay, I shared with you the fact that we had a grievance presented to us, and I've prepared an answer to that for the board. And I want to make sure that this meets your approval prior to answering that grievance for the board. Let's see if there are any questions.
Motion to instruct the superintendent to move forward.
Am I finished reading this? Sorry. I'll talk you part and try.
Just move forward. Has this been submitted to the WA? No. Okay.
I'm asking for one. Everybody read it? I move that we give instruction to the superintendent to move forward with the grievance that has been filed.
I'll second it.
Case to move and seconded to do such. Any discussion?
What happened to move forward?
He's going to submit the letter to the WA.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Are you abstaining? Was there a one? Okay, we've got an update on the AOS engineering study.
Right. The report's due next week. I talked to Mr. Black. He expects to have it here next week. I'm hoping I see a draft of it prior to its being sent out. We will then establish a review for the board in a public meeting, so that if the board has any questions, we can have Steve and his folks come up and answer those questions and willing to do that. I did, just for kicks and giggles, I got a draft report of part of the enrollment projection report, and that's kind of important to me, and it's becoming more and more important to other boards that also send students here. I was in Wake today, and they had lots of questions at their board meeting around their budget and what the impact might be going forward. They've grown in numbers out there in the last couple of years from nine students to fifteen students. They had concerns about how far they may have to grow and what they may have to set aside for growth if they have more tuition students in South Dakota, Baileyville, go to some other places. You have some students at the academy as well. So I'll send a few of these around. I've got some answers to. I missed an extra one. And what this does is it projects based upon an algorithm that they use, and then she took into consideration the last in-out movements that we've had and growth based on short-term changes we've had. And in doing so, you notice that she used a minus and plus ten percent from projections. The projections are based on the algorithm, and the plus ten percent is the direction we're going in, and about five percent at the high school. So you get a range of students with a projection in between. Up front, the projection that's in the middle will probably be pretty close for the next couple of years as things ramp up and change a little bit. The expectation is we'll move to the plus range. So over the long run, you see that things tend to go up, and then they sort of settle out, and if we were to take it out to you, where it just basically flattens out at those numbers. And that's what my expectation was. Been talking with Bill, they are in the process of hiring the enderpeople, and I know they just hired a young gentleman, and they're moving here, and his wife is an engineer. She's already awaiting the birth of a child, so four years from now, there'll be another one in preschool, and I think we'll see some more of that going forward. We'll see that grow, and then over time, it'll just flatten out. So that kind of helps us look at numbers, we divide up by grades, and I've got some other reports that will come forward that actually breaks that down into grade level expectations as well. Help us plan for future growth, for future needs for class sizes, and future needs for staffing designs. Okay?
Can we set a date for a public presentation of this?
I'd like to have the report first and have you come up and answer questions if there are any.
Well, we'd have three weeks in between if we went for the April nineteenth school board date, and how you'd be available.
We can, I say both vacations too, by the way. Whether you want to go on...
So what would we do with the meeting? Make it the twenty-sixth?
We didn't go twenty-sixth, and it's relevant. We wanted it sixteen, it should be the fifth one.
Yeah, maybe we'd have the twelve.
No, we'd probably go to twenty-sixth, and I'd just...
Twenty-five.
And certainly, we could do it then.
For...
A roll.
Would he be doing it himself?
I'm going to ask Steve. He will come up and be here with it, yes.
Yeah.
And the schedule, that depends on his schedule too. It may, we may...
Need a bigger space than...
Need a bigger space, and we may need to go up and alter the date for that meeting, but I'll try and plan it for twenty-sixth.
But I feel, when we planned this in January, we clearly told them we wanted this at the end of February, beginning of March. I think we're, we're already over month off.
Well, we ended up because of the bidding process going a little bit longer on timeline.
So I think it's been delayed on up for people. Just a good time to get it, get copies, I like...
Yeah.
Ask questions.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that you have a chance, the board has a chance to review it prior to the presentation, so they understand exactly what it says, and a chance to ask questions. And certainly, since you've all been a part of it, when that meeting, whether you're still here or not, I'll invite you back to be part of that.
Oh, thank you.
Whether you're...
A reunion.
Sort of a reunion, but you are a part of the organization of it, and you can ask some specific questions based on what you know.
All right. Okay, we have the second reading of some policies.
Yeah. In front of you, we have second readings for KFB through BBA. And that includes the parent involvement in Title I, which is a required part of it. And then the Es, E1, E2, E3 are suggested to be included in it, and I have to do it in reality for each building level. And because we're a district-wide program, I have to do it for all the way through A3. And then I was asked to, as a part of that, to include an update of the ethics, and that's attached to that as well, and an update on the conflict of interest and organization. So that goes KB, KFB, KFB-E1, E2, E3, BBA, BBBA, BBBE, BBD, BBF, dash E, EBC, EBA.
Jamie, please.
Are we going to go after one at a time?
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to.
I don't have any questions on KBF.
Okay.
On KBF-E1, under B, in number two?
Yep.
I had mentioned the district level thing. I wasn't comfortable with that wording, and you took it out the second time.
Yeah, I did. In fact, I...
But in number two, we need to take it out of there. We took it out of the other one.
We can just take district level out, yes.
Has this been submitted to the WA?
No.
I'm asking for one. Everybody read it? I move that we give instruction to the superintendent to move forward with the grievance that has been filed. Is the movement seconded to do such? Any discussion?
What happened to moving forward?
He's gonna submit the letter to the WA. All in favor? All opposed? Are you abstaining? Was there a one? Okay, we've got an update on the AOS engineering study.
The report's due next week. I talked to Mr. Black. He expects to have it here next week. I'm hoping I see a draft of it prior to its being sent out. We will then establish a review for the board and in a public meeting. So if the board has any questions, we can have Steve and his folks come up and answer those questions and willing to do that. I did just for kicks and giggles, I got a draft report of part of the enrollment projection report, and that's kind of important to me, and it's becoming more and more important to other boards that also send students here. I was in Wake today and they had lots of questions at their board meeting around their budget and what the impact might be going forward. They've grown in numbers out there in the last couple of years from nine students to 15 students. And concerned about how far they may have to go and what they may have to set aside for growth if they have more tuition students in the South who come to Baileyville, go to some other place, they do have some students at the academy as well. So, I'll send a few of these around. And what this does is it projects based upon an algorithm that they use, and then she took into consideration the last in-out movements that we've had and growth based on short-term changes we've had. And in doing so, you notice that she used a minus and plus 10% from projections. The projections are based on the algorithm, and the plus 10% is the direction we're going in. And about 5% at the high school. So you get a range of students with a projection in between. Up front, the projection that's in the middle will probably be pretty close for the next couple of years. As things ramp up and change a little bit, the expectation is we'll move to the plus range. So, over the long run, you'll see that things tend to go up and then they sort of settle out, and if we were to take it out to you or even just basically flattens out at those numbers. And that's what my expectation was. Been talking with Bill. They are in the process of hiring the under people, and I know they just hired a young gentleman, and they're moving here, he and his wife is an engineer, and she's already awaiting the birth of a child, so four years from now there'll be another one in preschool, and I think we'll see some more of that going forward. We'll see that grow, and then over time it'll just flatten out. So that kind of helps us look at numbers when we divide up by grades, and I've got some other reports that will come forward that actually breaks that down into grade level expectations as well. Help us plan for future growth, for future needs for class sizes, and future needs for staffing designs.
Can we set a date for a public presentation of this?
I'd like to have the report first and have you come up and answer questions if there are any.
Well, we'd have three weeks in between if we went for the April 19th School Board date, and how you'd be available.
We can, I say both vacations too, by the way.
So what would we do with the meeting? Make it the 26th?
We didn't go 26th, and well, we wanted 16th, it should be the fifth one.
Yeah, maybe we'd have the 12th.
No, we'd probably go to 26th. And I just... And certainly we could do it then.
Would he be doing it himself?
I'm gonna ask Steve. He will come up and be here with it, yes. And the schedule, that depends on his schedule too. It may, we may...
Need a bigger space than...
Need a bigger space, and we may need to go up and alter the date for that meeting. But I'll try and plan for the 26th.
But I feel, when we planned this in January, we clearly told them we wanted this at the end of February, beginning of March, and I think we're already over month off.
Well, we ended up because of the bid process going a little bit longer on timeline.
So I think it's been delayed on up for people. Just a good time to get copies of it.
Yeah.
Ask questions.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that you have a chance, the board has a chance to review it prior to the presentation, so they understand exactly what it says, and a chance to ask questions. And certainly, since you've all been a part of it, when that meeting, whether you're still here or not, I'll invite you back.
Oh, thank you.
Whether you're...
A reunion.
Sort of a reunion, but you are a part of the organization of it, and you can ask some specific questions based on what you know.
Okay, we have the second reading of some policies.
Yeah. In front of you have second readings for KFB through BBA. And that includes the parent involvement in Title I, which is a required part of it. And then the E's, E1, E2, E3 are suggested to be included in it. And I have to do it in reality for each building level. And because we're a district-wide program, I have to do it for all the way through A3. And then, I was asked to, as a part of that, to include an update of the ethics, and that's attached to that as well. And an update on the conflict of interest and organization. So that goes KB, KFB, KFB-E1, E2, E3, BBA. BBBA, BBBE, BBD, BBF- E, EBC, BDA.
Are we gonna go after one at a time?
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to.
I don't have any questions on KBF.
Okay.
On KBF-E1, under B, in number two.
Yep.
I had mentioned the district level thing, I wasn't comfortable with that wording, and you took it out the second time.
Yeah, I did. In fact, I did.
But in number two, we need to take it out of there, we took it out of the other one.
We can just take district level out, yes. I'll strike it.
And on the back of D, you need a colon after by.
Where was that?
Colon, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Instead of period.
Always the English teacher.
You can't help myself. Sometimes I wish it wasn't that way. On BBBE...
BBBE.
Isn't that our inspired term fulfillment vacancies?
Yeah.
Also in the charter, it says when the person is no longer a legal resident of the town or is absent more than 90 days, do we want to include that?
It's in there, isn't it?
No, it's not in what we are having, approving the policy, but it's in the charter. So do we want to include that?
Oh, it says when a member changes residency from the municipality which elected.
But also is absent for more than 90 days. Three consecutive meetings.
Says three consecutive meetings. Keep it that way.
Just asking because your charter is...
And I'm gonna hit something else that, just throw at you. I know that back in May when a opening came up, and I expressed my interest in the school committee, I had sent an email to the chairperson there at the time, Sheridan, and made it very clear to him that I would be available for an interview, so that the other board members could ask whatever they wanted for questions. And he said, no, that that wasn't necessary. And apparently, probably could have changed his mind if he'd had it to do over again. So, is this something that we as a board want to throw in there? Like, all potential candidates should be interviewed? Just, or just keep it the way it is and select who you want, what was interested? I don't know, just throwing that out there.
I think at the time, there were problems having five people board school board until this year.
I mean, that may be the case, and then...
I think in the past, all they had done was asked for letters from the people who were interested.
Right.
And I think that's the reason they did that. I mean, when I reenrolled last year, I was the only one. So it's something wonderful to see what's happened this year. Maybe some people will find me interested. But, it's a good question, do we want to change it? Have more than a letter of application, a letter of interest?
Well, I'm just remembering vividly what happened after I got selected, and after I offered to be interviewed and they didn't, and the rest is history, but I just...
Yeah, since it's of so much interest now, what our philosophy is and what our beliefs are, when no one interviewed us before, no newspaper contacted any of you or me for any of my thoughts.
Well, just throwing it out there. Anyone interested? What do you think, Crystal? Yes, no, don't care?
Say just leave it the way it is. I think we should leave it the way it is.
Okay.
I still leave it the way it is.
I'm fine with what they've done in the past.
Okay, all right. Scratch that.
Okay, on BBD, which is just the next page. It would not be the superintendent that will appoint another person to replace an absent member of the remainder of the district members' term. It would be the school committee.
Pilot trip, though.
Yeah. Yeah, somebody couldn't read my writing.
Did you see, I think because of all the books I did do with Title I, is there anything else?
I looked up through Title I.
Do the, I should have checked this on my own, but do the board of directors or the school board, ethics, are either, is this pretty much aligned with what's in the book?
Yes.
The manual?
Yes.
Is it word for word?
Pretty much word for word, it was in the manual, yes.
Okay. I should have checked that, I didn't.
Actually inserted it directly out of it.
Never mind. On BBF- E.
Yep.
On L.
Yep.
After office, that should be a comma instead and a lowercase t, because that's not a complete sentence after that. It just should be a clause, you can continue the issue.
Okay. Under letter L, on the BBF- E. Yep, it's on the first page.
Comma after office, lowercase t, just to continue the sentence, that's not a sentence following there, but leave it the way it is.
Anything else? Everyone good? Okay. I move that we accept and adopt the following policies as submitted.
With the changes.
What the meanings. KFB, KFB-E1, KFB-E2, KFB-E3, BBA, BBBA, BBBE, BBD, BBF- E, BCB, BDA. Is there a second?
Second.
So we move to the second, to adopt the previously read policies. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, as a side note to that, I gave you a stack also of what I would request in CBI, CF, and CG, uh, C, not GBD. The first one requested under CBI, bring forward, was the evaluation superintendent. It seemed to have a discussion with having one on the side over here earlier. AOS board is the hiring capacity and responsible for the evaluation, but each board obviously has a part or a role to play in that evaluation. And last year, some submitted, of the 23-plus board members, 33-plus board members, there were 19, I believe, submitted evaluations. But everybody received one. The thought process that we discussed earlier was that maybe the board would like to do one to submit to the AOS as a preference to it. So the AOS board's policy certainly has an evaluation process in it in front of you. But the Baileyville board certainly could have an independent process if they so chose, that they would then submit as a combined score, rating, whatever, to the AOS board, if that's the decision or the direction the board would like to go. And certainly put that together.
So five, four less, four less evaluations you have to...
Well, actually, there's 14 boards out there. In the last couple of days, I've been with four of them. This is the fifth.
I think this is something that the Baileyville committee should adopt. I did go to the website and copied the evaluation for the superintendent of CBI that they recommend. This is pretty much it. So I think, in reviewing, when you guys get a chance to read this, I think that we need to replace AOS 90 board with Baileyville School Committee and do our own. And I think that we should do one and schedule sessions with Bill. Of course, we have, the board would have a session by itself to discuss it, and then we would meet with Bill in executive session to discuss it as a whole. And I think this would clear out any question of whether our delegate sent to the AOS 90 board represents the board. And I would like to say, in defense of Gwen as the spokesperson at AOS 90 board, I have discussed several times with Bill my evaluation. I concur with what she said, he knows that, I stand by my evaluation I made at the time, and if he allowed me, I would make it public. So anyway, I think that we should have one in late October or November. And I think that ought to be explained in, I don't know, I guess at B, regularly scheduled time. So when we get to a second reading, if you have any thoughts, we'll cover that.
To what end would the benefits of individual boards have in evaluating a superintendent when...
Because it would clear up any doubt about validity of our representative speaking for the Baileyville School Committee at the AOS 90 board meeting. Because we have a composite of evaluations. Bill would understand, going to that meeting, what was our evaluation and/or any recommendations we're making.
Before he got to the meeting.
Yes.
You?
I prefer give my own. Tell them what I think of my own.
Well, you would be in a meeting.
So he'd still, he would hear everybody's opinion.
What would happen, Crystal, is we would all have the same forms we had last fall to fill out. We would fill those out, then we would meet as a group in a composite. They would compact all of those evaluations, and it's like when you guys interview coaches, you'd get summaries, and then the statements and the comments, if anybody wrote anything, those would be given to him as well, we would discuss it. Then there would be a separate executive session with him, and all of that would be given to him.
So he still would get each, everybody's comments.
Exactly. It would just be collected, and it would be clear to him before he goes to Topsfield or wherever they have their meeting.
What do you think, Bill?
All right, you can evaluate me any way you'd like.
It's pretty efficient, I would. I mean, he's still Baileyville superintendent. Why can't we have an evaluation now?
I don't disagree.
So the wording on this would have to change. Yeah, every time you have AOS 90 board, it would be Baileyville School Committee. And we would add that we would do this in B, it would be late October or early November, because the AOS meeting's probably in December.
You're in December, yes.
If you had a new superintendent, would that be enough time to give them to...
Well, I'm sure we'd have to take that into consideration, any board members would, I should hope.
Well, if it's a policy, then it's a policy.
And it goes for anybody else, Patty. We have a lot of these people that were just on board when we got them through their letter of application, and they aren't familiar either.
But you may want to put that in your policy, something like that.
You would, I'm sure you would take it into consideration in completing the evaluation.
Common sense. Someone's only been here months ago.
You need to have it in writing, because you can't teach common sense.
Well, all you can say is take into consideration how familiar they are with superintendent, based on their time on the board and their experiences.
Or you could put a minimum of six months.
Because there were some people that did not submit evaluations because they didn't know them well enough, or they didn't feel they were doing well enough. And that's an option that they have. But, he's gonna have a private meeting with us, and it could be discussed then. It's not like the public is gonna see those unless he wants it that way.
Couldn't we put a minimum, having tenure of a minimum of six months before an evaluation is conducted?
But you could potentially, if you think, if you think of it that way, let's say four of you leave, that means next year...
Wishful thinking, Patty.
No, it's not, it's not wishful thinking, Andrew. You're making assumptions. So potentially, next year, Elaine could be the only one that did the, did the...
Evaluation.
Evaluation. Is that, you know, that's kind of getting you to...
There's an opportunity in the evaluations, you know, to note that I don't have enough information to complete, or I wasn't one of the questions talks about negotiations. And we may or may not have negotiated, and a board member may not have sat in on that process, and may not be aware of what happened or how it went. And so enough to opt out of that question, I don't have enough information to make a comment. And basically, they would only make comments on those areas that they felt they had knowledge of. So, time, six, four and a half dozen.
I think you could have, one of the options be, I don't have any experience or I had no observations. I don't think it's right that we automatically say, I was only elected in March and was asked to do this in November, or well, October, I probably got it.
Yeah.
You know, so, but I was involved in the negotiations. But anyway, I don't think it would be right for us to say, as a duly appointed or elected public official, that we say, you shouldn't fill out. I don't think it's right for timing on it. We have to trust in the people that we are appointing or electing.
So you're...
But I'm thinking of the same evaluation form we use for the AOS 90. Because you have a chance to score, a rating score, and you have a chance to comment on every single one.
Correct.
And it's even better for any superintendent that the board would need along, and it would be him, or she.
Or she, whomever it is.
But I think that the Baileyville School Committee should be doing their own evaluation, because we do have some other concerns that obviously were not of concern to the AOS board. Board.
That's true. Okay, so, as submitted, you're going to do a first reading, or adopt it right now, or, I could, you have to do the first reading.
Do the first reading with, with the amendments to it.
First reading with the amendments, and then I'll make the changes, and...
All right, a move that we...
Wait a minute.
Oh, you're not done.
I don't want to do all three. Because the school building administration that I got off the website is absolutely nothing like the one we got tonight. That's the one we got tonight.
Yeah, this was done in 1998.
Right. And this is the one off the website that they're recommending now. So either we all get copies of this and read it, or we approve it for first reading. That's the one I took off the website, that CF.
Oh, that's, that's the, uh, Steve. And what I did is just ran yours. I didn't know where to go exactly. And I made the changes. You'll know, him, her, and they, and so on. I just updated what you had. But do I go into the graphing, so we agree as well?
You want copies of this?
Yeah.
Can we get these?
For the next meeting, or you want to do it now?
Four.
Five.
Four. Five.
Is that a staff conflict report to AOS 90?
Uh, yep. That's it.
Yep, that's the same. The GBEA is the same on the website.
Because we, we didn't have a GBEA in our Board. That's why it's off the website. And the reason CF isn't, is because you have one...
We did have one.
We don't have much time left to get to.
Couple weeks. Study all the kids and then out of bounds.
Yeah. Any, Andrew, do you want to go over GBEA while we get, wait for copies on the other one?
Sure. All right. Staff ethics slash conflict of interest. Okay, my first question is, what constitutes immediate family?
Well, that was in your house.
When it was listed for us, for the fourth one, it says spouse, child.
Child.
So it'd be stepchildren.
Brothers, sisters.
This says including in-laws, immediate family.
Immediate family would be...
It just said immediate family. And I, I think about that as in a household, but maybe I'm not.
Immediate family is usually your brother, sister, your mother, and your father.
See?
Section B, listen.
Oh, thank you. Including in-laws.
In-laws.
Mother-in-law, son-in-law.
All right. Anybody have any changes or amendments to this? The Board may approve an exception to this policy where the Board determines that granting of such exception is in the best interest of the school system.
Correct.
Wouldn't we be going against policy?
No, you wouldn't. You can grant an exception to any policy that you need to from a Board standard.
Thank you very much, Patty.
By being a small system, and with a limited number of applicants that are qualified to serve in positions, you may run into that. And you have to have a way to deal with it, or you may end up out of a bus driver or without an employee that you need to have in place.
Administrative officer, no. Is that just building principals, or is that the school committee, too?
No.
Can I hire my daughter here?
Uh, no. No, that'd be a conflict.
Okay. So that's why I'm asking.
And that's a conflict in law.
Unless we determine that it would be in the best interest of the school system.
Correct. And the Board could determine that. But it would be the individual. The individual would want to abstain from that discussion. For obvious reasons.
Looks good. Anything else, Elaine?
You now have the sample of CF, that's the MSMA example. The one that you had was out of our book. I only made a couple of changes in it to bring it up to date, because it was a very old policy. And CF is, is Maine School Management has to edit a little bit, take some of that sample stuff off, and so on.
All right, do we have an existing CF of our own?
That's the one that you have.
This is it, okay.
It's on the backside, the original, and you'll note on the backside that I made a couple corrections and redid it on the front. So it's the old policy, just with a couple of changes to update it.
From the 90s.
So if you leave B on that policy, does that take place of the principal's job description?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Well, you're going to need to make sure that they both coincide with each other, particularly in language.
Yeah.
Because you don't need two different formats.
But that would be up to you and Bill to come back to us with.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hello, this is Brittany.
Which one?
The CF. It says, acting with approval on superintendent, the principal shall be the chief administrator of his or her school. And then the next one says, all personnel assigned from building shall be directly responsible to the superintendent.
That's CF. Is it CF?
Yeah.
Yeah. It names, it names our chief administrator the principal, and then it says, all personnel in the building have to go to the superintendent.
That's why we, that's why we passed for the one out of the S, SMMB.
Oh, this is the, oh, this is...
That's the old one.
That's the old one. This is the old one, if they take that. Sorry, excuse me, anyone?
All right, so we have CF, a CBI, a GBEA, and a CBI to accept as first readings.
Are we doing first reading of CF tonight? Is everybody ready?
No, we're going to take it home.
Are we going to take it home?
Well, I'd like to take it home.
No, it's probably a good idea.
I like to read things over before I...
Even, even with that, maybe something with Patty and Bill could get together.
We can get together.
The duties and responsibilities, Patty thought there might be a conflict or...
Well, I don't think that there's a conflict, because it's pretty, I mean, they all say the same, but the language, you want to make sure that the language is the same on both documents. You don't want to have conflicting language.
Okay, so we're down to, down to...
CBI and GBEA.
CBI and GBEA.
Yeah, CBI. We had proposed that we add late November, or late October or November to B. And Bill will fix that up, too.
Yep.
Match school committees versus Board, AOS 90.
CF needs some fixing, and GBEA, nobody had any...
So you can accept CBI with the changes for first reading, and GBEA as presented. Because that would be the motion.
And the motion is to accept, for the first reading, school board policy, GBEA and CBI with changes. With the noted amendments. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, ruled and seconded to accept school board policy, GBEA and CBI as amended for the first reading.
First reading, got it.
Any discussions? You in favor? Okay, 2016-17 budget. Hopefully, it's in its final stage that we can move forward.
In your package, you have it, in all the changes that you had at the last meeting. Move the head tech twos, threes, as requested, and edit the health insurance for them.
Can I say something?
Edit, yes. Go ahead.
We've been criticized for some of the changes and adjustments that we've made with an elementary school. We did this over the process of four different meetings, over a month-long process of looking at this budget and listening to our teachers, our special ed teachers, our Title I teacher, our special services director. And we've decided that these children need our attention now. If we take these kids in grade kindergarten and one and two, and don't give them the help that they need now, they're going to reach grades three, four, and five, and they will qualify for special ed, because they'll be three years behind. And I would rather see the kids learn to read where they should, in kindergarten and first grade and second grade, and get the help they need now. So Bill's worked carefully with this and given us advice. We've adjusted a couple of positions. It's not as if we're funding complete new positions. We're working through special ed and Title I, so that we're getting a lot of our needs funded, at least through reimbursement. But that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
I'm going to back her up. Seriously.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't this a result of the cuts that were made out there maybe three years ago by the previous Board? Didn't they cut some positions out there at that time?
Up to about four years ago is when it started, and slowly, over the course of time. Title I has been gone from a three-person position down to a two. Then it went down to a one and a half. And by putting, nothing against Ms. Smith, because I know she did a fantastic job, but being principal and doing Title I and being out of the building, I'm sure that there were occasions when her students weren't serviced, which did an injustice to those kids. And what's happening is, it's a ricochet effect. And if we don't put those positions back in, special ed is going to continue to rise. And the best place to catch these kids is in the very beginning, kindergarten, first and second, when you have your ITI program, RTI program set up to help get what these kids need. And that's where we need to go back to. We need to go back to the fundamentals and put these things back in the school.
Am I correct in saying that if, if we, by cutting Title I, it's really, really hard to get that funding back if we cut it?
No, it's, it's a baseline funding, based upon, I'm afraid, reduced hot lunch numbers. And as we go forward, I expect there'll be some changes in how EESA is actually funded. They're changing the rules this year. It won't affect us till next year. It was reauthorized with a different set of rules, but then we have to write the rules at the federal level and then pass those down. Our biggest effect of Title, Title I is that over the last probably ten years, every year, it's, seems to have been reduced federally. Some of that had to do with the way the feds decided to divide it up by states. It used to be a block grant years ago. Then it went to population areas, and this Maine's population has changed, and other populations have grown. Maine as a group has lost money. That's re-divided, as it's sent out from the State Department to local agencies, which has also caused reductions. We'll be looking at about a $2,000 reduction in that level next year.
So, so reminds me why people need to know also why we're going for EdTech threes. EdTech threes are different from EdTech twos. There are people who, some of them do have a college degree. They may lack student teaching or whatever, but through their licensing, they are afforded a lot more independence with their kids. They can take small groups of kids aside, and they're working under a supervising teacher, but they can work with those kids directly, and they can do lessons more independently. EdTech twos can't do that, legally anyway. And that's why we're going for the EdTech threes, because it's almost like having another teacher.
Am I talking with parents in that third grade, only because my granddaughter's in there? That's the large class of 26, and that teacher's done amazing things with a bunch of kids as large as that, and the needs that she has to...
Has.
Yeah. That, that having that EdTech follow-through with that particular group, as long as it stays as large as it is, is going to benefit special to them as they get into the older grades.
Becky asked the question, I think at the last meeting, if, if this present Board accepted budget as it's presented, could the newly-elected Board make changes to it? And the answer to that is yes, they can. They can cut it, they can do anything they want with it until...
It comes to the voters.
Goes to the June meeting, the voters. So, but I would, I would say, make this statement right now, that anybody who gets elected on the Board, that we think we've built a pretty good budget here. I'd like to, I think we'd all like to be able to put more money into it, but I think we've put more in it than, than most people expected us to. So I would hope that the newly, newly-elected Board doesn't mess with it too much.
It's a two-part budget question. They ask it.
Absolutely. Who are you asking?
Mrs. Ramsdale mentioned just a few minutes ago that when Mrs. Smith was not in, that the Title I students were not, or may not be being serviced. Is that due in part to not being able to hire a sub for a half-day? And, second question, did you guys, you mentioned before that you were going to address the sub pay and the budget. Was that done?
Well, second, into the second part of the question, Steve, is yes. So I think it was increased to 75?
Correct.
Yep, 75 per day. Which I think we all thought that, I think it was unanimous that we all thought that that was the right thing to do. Answer to your first part of the question. I wish Jane were here, and I'm just going to, I'm going to answer the question, and if I'm wrong, it's probable. But, oh, Marsha, can you answer that? Steve asked a question, under Title I, that the students aren't serviced because there was a lack of... Steve asked the question, under Title I, that students aren't serviced because there was a lack of a sub? Or lack of a-
I mean, on occasion, there is a lack of a sub. And on other occasions, I believe one day there was a bomb threat thing, and that kind of consumed the principal that morning, so that would say no children got served. And maybe it was too short on those kids, like then.
Yeah. So now that it's on the table for discussion, that's probably an area that deserves attention, right? I think that's clear in everybody's mind, yeah.
On the sub pay? Bill, can you explain the different levels of sub pay? Because it's different whether they-
It's different. We're talking about a certified person at $75 a day, and it's reduced for a person who has, does not have certification as a teacher. Uh, 65, 70, and 75, depending on what, what they are. And at $65 a day, $28 a day, we're barely making minimum wage, if you really think that through. I know basically they give you about seven and a half, but, you know, it's not a real high per hour wage.
So you went up to 65 from 60?
Correct. Yeah, I took them all up.
All right, so my question about this budget is, if it's final, this is the bottom line?
This is the bottom line. If we go to the last page of this, so I can, I can hit that, just the small, small things that we talked about.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It was just, someone asked me, so I'm asking you. On page seven, where you have the nurse's salary, is she part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
She's part-time.
And, and the health insurance right underneath it, is that her insurance? Or is that, okay, most places I ever work, part-time employees don't get insurance, so I'm just asking?
They do.
They, they do get insurance?
And how come it jumped from 1,000 to 11?
Because she went from, uh, no coverage, basically, to coverage. She didn't have coverage.
Yeah, if they offer no coverage, they do get-
They get $1,000 without coverage, cashing loan. And she opted to take coverage because of a change in employment. A family. And that's what happens.
So part-timers can get insurance?
Under federal law.
Okay.
She's got the hours.
How many hours?
Anything else?
She get a week? I just, anybody I've worked, yeah.
1% of the hours.
So that's how I'm asking, 30?
She's 30 hours.
Does she work in Princeton, too?
Yeah. Only, uh, one day, one day a month in Princeton.
Would they be willing to pay a smidgen of that cost?
I would charge it to them. I don't think they'd be willing to pay it, you know? It's by giving a wallet out and saying, "Grab what you want."
We're looking at our insurance costs going up. If they'd give us 1,000, we'd be happy. Nine percent is-
Yeah.
Not what we were wanting.
So the bottom line of the-
Okay, yeah.
Proposed 2016-17 school budget, local share is $2,482,793.
Correct. And the changes, um, and as I went through the funding formula that we did previously, you know that our rolling numbers went up, and the valuation actually dropped on three-year average. And so, because of that, the local required share actually went down. The state allocation went up significantly. It actually went up after the budget was approved last year. We carried those funds over, included the increase in this year, so that's an increase in state funds of 129,497. Elementary tuition, we expect to be out based on the numbers that are coming in. And secondary tuition will be down, based on the numbers that we expect to come in. We hate to, we sure do not want to overestimate those numbers. We try to be just as exact as we can be. Uh, instructional contracts are up just a little bit, and secondary special ed costs will be down, and that's outplacement and additional services. Miscellaneous revenue, we're not getting miscellaneous revenue. We were, so we've reduced that. And fund balance, we've had a tough year with a number of things, and we've reduced what we expect to have for fund balance. So, uh, basically, the additional local needed 161. Total budget is 230, and total local increase is 133,961. Now, I'd like to think that, based on the state cuts that maybe some other neighboring small schools might have issued and send more kids to us, and I see more tuition, but I can't guarantee that.
All right. I mean, I move that we, um, accept the proposed 2016-17 school budget at local share of $2,482,793. And we move this to town meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded to accept the proposed 2016-17 budget as read. Any discussions? All in favor? Five seconds.
Yep.
All right. The date for the next meeting, is that like in town charter? Do they have to have an organized meeting some, a certain time after?
Right after, yeah.
Town meeting, right after?
Town meeting, uh, the vote is 28th, the next meeting would be April V. We just look, the 4th or 5th?
Wow.
I have to look now.
Fifth.
First, first one was the 5th. Already got you on.
Is Sherman going down to that sale?
Yes.
Okay.
On the 26th in Robinson?
Yes. He's already got a list. Couple of whiteboards, uh, buffer, uh, some art supplies, uh, can't remember what else. Smartboard. They've got his smartboard down there that's hardly used.
Yep.
Do you think we might be able to find a desk in the office?
He's gonna look.
Yeah, he's gonna look.
We've got him on picture dial. He's gonna send us pictures, things down there.
I, I, I talked to the superintendent, and he said that some of the furniture, um, town officials have already given a shot. And he said, "I'm not sure that there's anything there that you might want, but certainly you're welcome to look. And if it's something you want, make an offer, a dollar, five dollars."
Yeah, we already got the K through two reading street curriculum, the new set that they've got. We got it the other day.
Awesome.
For little or nothing as well.
Pretty much.
Mm-hmm.
I did put in for whiteboard, too, so.
Well, we'll fight over them.
Hi.
We're in severe need of chairs and desks at our school.
That was-
They're at, they're at a hazard for our students, really.
I think, I think a lot, I think a lot of them went up to Callis, but they probably do have some, because they-
Went up to Callis?
The ones from Robinson.
The ones from Robinson.
Yeah, so they gave them a lot.
But there still might be some down there, because they loaded everything into the gym.
I was by appropriate, do they have that one? I can make the list of all the things.
Make sure, make sure Sherman gets it, gets the list.
I think they did. I think we got that, too.
Becky?
I think, I'm not positive. I can check. It wasn't me. I only asked for grade one. But I'll check tomorrow and see if Ronnie got that.
We have here, um, a report from the elementary school principal.
Yeah.
I just, we can probably, you wanna, you wanna read it now, or wait till the next meeting?
We can wait till the next meeting, I'll carry it over.
Carry it over.
It'll be all yours, but, um...
Yep.
And you've got it.
Yep.
I'll submit it when we meet.
And I think that concludes our meeting for this evening.
You're in there. Most new jerseys, huh?
I make a motion to return.
Where?
We moved and seconded.
Becky, I, part of my left ear, and I wasn't sure.
All in favor?